The next three speakers will be Ben Stillerman, Josefina Ventura, and Jeannie Dubnow. Ben Stillerman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ben Stillerman and I volunteer on the Met Council's tenant hotline and answering calls. I've interacted with many more rent stabilized tenants than I otherwise would in my daily life. And sometimes stabilized tenants call and they have rent freezes from being seniors or on disability. And it's gratifying-
Can you speak closer to the microphones?
Oh, yeah.
Everybody can hear, thank you.
Yeah. And so they have some, they have SCRI or DRI, so it's gratifying in these cases to help sort of answer questions. But much more frequent and much less pleasant are the calls from stabilized tenants who are struggling to make ends meet but don't qualify for any of these programs that help only some stabilized tenants. Like a few weeks ago, a woman from Queens called, a working, single mom, and during the call I realized that basically all of her problems that she was explaining boiled down to the simple fact that she wouldn't be able to pay, afford her rent for much longer. And without much recourse, I sheepishly offered that she could try to get a roommate. There was no room for a roommate, just, she already lived in a small place with her son. And so the call basically ended in a very somber mood. I gave her my best but wished I could point her towards another option. I also talked to countless tenants dealing with negligent landlords, or worse, who are deliberately making it hard to get necessary repairs or to deal with pests, conditions we'd all expect and hope for. Folks are scared and they're often skeptical of their landlord's intentions. And with incentives like these on landlords to frustrate and harass their tenants out of their houses and get vacancy bonus and sort of make that progression towards units getting deregulated, the system is broken in a very broad sense, but one thing that's within your power is to stop giving landlords these big increases, which is why a rollback is ultimately necessary, even if not this year. And talking to tenants like these, it strikes me how precarious many people's housing situations are and how we need to maintain the ever dwindling rent regulations that protect tenants against the unrelenting free market. And as a small piece of this, I urge you to vote for only a 1% increase this year, the lowest increase being offered. Thank you.
Thank you. Josefina Ventura?
Good evening. Good evening, committee.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. The reason why I came today to this event is to ask you, the committee, not to raise our rents. Please do not approve an increase anymore. Please roll it back. We've been having all these kind of problems in our community. Firstly, I come from Washington Heights and I work with an organization which is Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association. And we, a lot of people from different way of life, they come to our organization. And the main problem is the rent. The landlord want them out, they bring bogus suits. Actually, we have a senior citizen who came and he, the building was hit, they have an approved MCI from the HCR. $230, he was hit. He's already retired. He has fixed income. So he came to our organization asking, "What am I gonna do? Because I cannot pay $230 plus the increases that the RGB approved." So we're trying to help as much as we can. We also have tenant, the other day we have a tenant who came because he got a notification from Housing Corps that they were going to take him out because he didn't pay, which was, was a lie. So I asked him to give me proof that you paid, which in fact he did, and I mailed it to the landlord. And I asked him, "Can you check your accounting records? Who did you apply all these funds, all these money orders that this gentleman mailed you?" He couldn't help himself because he didn't speak English. So I asked him, "Can you please check your accounting records? And please give me a call back or I give you a call back." At the end, he called me, he said, "Oh, well, I'm sorry. We misapplied the payment to another tenant." So I said, "But do you think it's acceptable that you took him to court? He's scared that he might be throw out his apartment," which is a lie. You simply make a mistake. So I, I please ask you, the committee, not to increase our rents anymore.
Thank you. Jeannie Dubnow?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeannie Dubnow from Rena, Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association. And I'm addressing the public members. Because you have a awesome responsibility on your shoulders. And if you don't do the right thing, you will be responsible yourselves personally for increasing homelessness here in this city of New York. You know, everybody knows that we have more homelessness now than we ever had before. I was just in Washington Square Park for something and the homeless people were filling up all the benches there. Why? Because they can't afford the apartments. It's obvious. I mean, honestly, we shouldn't have to have this meeting here tonight. Because anybody who's got a brain in their head, who's reading the newspapers, knows goddamn well that the rents are too high. And we cannot afford this anymore. There's more, so you personally, the five of you, will be responsible if you raise people's rents. Now, we know in Rena, and I'm sure this is true elsewhere as well, that many tenants didn't even take the 0% because they were so scared that the next year, the rent was gonna go up higher, which it might have, that they took the 2%, even though they couldn't really afford it because they thought, "God, the year after, who knows what the Rent Guidelines Board will do? Maybe they'll increase at 4%, 5%, 6%, like they've been doing for years and years and years." So I'm telling you, I'm not asking you, I'm telling you that if you do not go for at least a 0% for the, 0 for one year and 0 for two years, that on your heads will be the lives of thousands upon thousands of people in New York City.
The next three speakers will be, can you turn that off? The next three speakers will be Kathleen Wakem, Sherri Culpepper, and Griselle Ortiz-Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Wakem. I'm here as an 1199 member and a member of Met Council on Housing. I'm a rent stabilized tenant. In 1974, 1199 Plaza was completed and was called the most significant housing development in New York City. It provided 1,594 units of affordable housing for union members. Since then, it has been difficult for the union and other entities to build such housing. As a result, union members, along with other New Yorkers, struggle to pay the rent. As a union member of 1199, I know the struggles of my coworkers. Despite contracts providing raises, our salaries are not enough in today's housing market. And then, our employment is precarious. Since 2000, 19 hospitals in New York City have closed. Most of the workers were 1199 members. My last place of employment was the South Bronx Mental Health Council, which closed in April 2013. A few workers found 1199 jobs, but many did not. The wait between jobs averaged several months. Also, management refused to pay severance and accrued benefits to us, which violated contractual agreements. Unemployment insurance benefits were not enough for most workers. Consequently, many workers were severely rent burdened. Prior to the closing, many workers lived far from the clinic because they could not afford their own domiciles near their place of employment. Several people lived in other counties such as Suffolk and Rockland. Others lived with families and some workers lived in rooms. This is a disgrace. People who care for the mentally ill, as well as other union members such as home health aides, porters, and medical assistants, cannot afford to live near their places of employment. The minimum 1199 wage is $10.50 an hour. Since 1978, rent increases have surpassed wage increases. To make up for this discrepancy, we need to have a fair and just, just rent rollback. If RGB is unable to do this, then we must have a rent freeze for one and two-year leases. According to the recent RGB report, landlords have received an increase of 10.8% of profit during the past year. No worker has ever received such an increase. In New York City, there are approximately 200,000 union members. A large majority of them live in rent stabilized apartments. Don't they deserve to live in the city where they work, providing our healthcare without being rent burdened? Helen, please think of your union membership and vote no for any increase. Thank you.
Sherri Culpepper?
Good evening. Yes, my name is Sherri Culpepper. I'm a fourth generation Harlemite. I'm in a very, they, there's a novel entitled Tale of Two Cities. New York City is a tale of an infinite number of cities. You all have an awesome job to balance the scales. And I am in the middle. I am a tenant and I'm also a homeowner of a property that was deemed an SRO years before I was born. My family struggled to purchase this property, couldn't, moved in 1935, couldn't purchase it until 1977 because the owner simply would not allow our family to purchase it. We, my family was the only one in the property and in 2012, something disintegrated, let's say. Anyway, I have nine people living for free for seven years. I've hired eight attorneys. I've taken them to court, gone through the process. And then I hear about rent stabilize and increases, and I'm like, "These people are living for free." I, I would pick nine people that just came up here, if nine have come yet, and allow them to live in my building and never raise their rent again if I could displace the ones that are in my building. So how, how do I balance this out? How do you balance this out? Something's terribly wrong. There, there's a system set up and you can't have small homeowners on the same criteria as big landlords that take advantage of union members that are living on fixed income. How do you balance it? So I'm here to say that there's something terribly wrong. We have to think outside the box and start humanizing the, the job you have before you. Because I, I stand here as someone that, that sees both sides very clearly and, and something must be done to help these in the audience and to help small landlords that would want to help and assist hardworking people that just want to pay rent and live in a city that they love and that they grow in and that they contribute to. Thank you very much. Sherri Culpepper.
Thank you. Griselle Ortiz-Thompson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for that eloquent testimony. My name is Griselle Ortiz-Thompson. I am a 57-year-old woman, born and raised in different sections of Harlem all my life. Raised three children primarily as a single mom. I know nothing but struggle. And now is the time that it's essential to maintain, to roll back these increases. I lived and raised my children out of 3333 Broadway now, formerly Riverside Park. We were a Mitchell Lama. Although it was a struggle, I was able to maintain it with a government job. I have raised my children, trying to send them and give them the advantage of private schooling and, and college tuition. So it's always been difficult, but now more so. After recently having injuries at my job and complicating health issues that continue to mount, I am now on disability retirement. After paying my rent, which is now supposed to be stabilized, but on that percentage of my pension, it's difficult to have any type of quality of living trying to balance food and medication. So my landlord presently has made a 1,200-unit building, which used to be 80% subsidized, it is now privatized. Okay? I'm in the middle crunched, but I don't even get any repairs. So to some extent, I'm even being discriminated by my landlord because I don't get any advantage of these MCIs, right? I still have the same equipment and the same conditions in the apartment that I had 30-plus years ago. So I, my ask and my experience is echoing what you've heard all night long, countlessly, that until we as a state can get the AMI equal to be by neighborhood and not by the state, that you take that into consideration on these increases for these stabilized apartments. Thank you. And I also want to say that it's telling of the desperation and the need, especially in the Harlem community, when you have a newly elected state senator, and I'm not sure if he's still, but formerly a developer of affordable housing who comes before you making the same ask. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Calvin Swan, Kadija Kans, and Lauren Nye.
Good morning. How y'all doing? First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for this opportunity to be able to speak before y'all.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for this opportunity to talk in front of y'all. My name is Calvin Swan. I volunteer for an organization called Pitch to the Homeless. I've been formerly homeless. I'm housed now.
You have to, you have to speak a little bit closer to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
I got you. My name is Calvin Swan.
Great.
I'm formerly homeless. I volunteer with an organization called Pitch to the Homeless, you know, helping people to deal with homelessness thing. The question I got for y'all is just right here. If people wages don't go up, how you gonna raise their rent? I don't understand that. If they ain't got the money, how you gonna pay it? I mean, if their wages go up, then they could pay their rent. We asking people to do something, I mean, so you trying to say they can't feed, take care of their children, can't buy clothes for their children, so if you raise their rent, this is what gonna happen? They not be able to feed themselves or they might be homeless? You know? And not only that, we talking about gentification. We talking about people coming from other countries moving these people out. I seen this happening. I'm actually the guy in New York that started stopping first to try to keep these people safe. The police know who I am. So I, I walk down the street, I have problems. But that's not, that's not why we here. We talking about rent stabilizing and keeping people where they at, not so they don't become homeless. And how do we do that? We, we gotta look at where the people at and how we could help them, instead of just, you know, looking at it from where we at. Because we can't do nothing, now we know who the people are and what their position is and what they able to pay. I'm on that SSI. I can't afford to stay where I, I live on 94th Street, you know? I don't like it. I'll be honest with you. Because you know why? Everywhere I live at, it's expensive. I don't have the money. I can't live over there. I don't even know why they put me over there to live. I can't afford to live over there. Because everything's out of the range of me being able to spend it. I mean, at the end of the month, I'm broke. I don't have enough money to even get on the train. So every time I get on the train, I get a summons for getting on the train because I don't have the money to be able to survive. So I'm in the court, and the court is taking my money on SSI, and that's not even supposed to happen. But it's happening. Because they broke it from the state to, to, from the federal, you should give you the money, now the state takes part of the money. They taking my money, not supposed to be doing that, but they do that. And I live in rent stabilized places. Matter of fact, I live in a SRO. Let me tell you something, right? I get beat up where I live at. And I, I've been to senators, I've talked to people, and nobody don't want to help me. I don't understand that. You know, I mean, like, I wish we could find a way where we can meet in the middle, where some people have some understanding of what's really going on. I thank you for the opportunity to share with y'all.
Thank you. Kadija Kans?
I'll just say that I, I totally hear that concern and, and, you know, as a representative who represents tenants on this board, that's the issue we see every day, that people struggle with the rents are going up and no one's able to afford where they live. And I think this is the job of this board to, to take that seriously. And what we propose in the preliminary guidelines is rolling back the rent. And if we can't do that, we need to tell everyone, the millions of New Yorkers, what this board is doing to them. We need to say, "We are intentionally increasing homelessness in New York if we increase the rents." And we have to be clear, that's what we're doing.
Good evening, Ms. Kans.
Good evening. My name is Kadija Kans. I live in a rent stabilized apartment. I'm also a worker for the city of New York, HRA. I wanted to say on, you know, both parts, that we're still fighting, we're still suffering from a recession that what didn't happen so long ago and also from Bloomberg's last RGB, which, board which was, uh, sorry, Rent Guidelines, I'm a little nervous. Uh, Rent Guidelines Board, which was giving us incredible increases. As someone who graduated from college, there are student loans that I have to pay back, Con Ed's and bills which go up in, very high, especially Manhattan. We also have the price of the, the cost of the rent and other expenses. One thing that my building is suffering from is the constant MCIs increases that we keep receiving. We had three increases within the past four years, which has been very difficult for us because it's been very major increases in the terraces, boiler, and what was the third one? But anyway, with our terraces, we had an increase and they only had to do 50% of the terraces in order to get that increase. So it's very difficult for the tenants to afford this cost and it's very helpful, helpful for a landlord who receives more money than the work that they actually put in. I just also wanted to say as a city worker, I work with the homeless population, I work with people who are struggling with their rent. I see a lot of people with fixed income who cannot afford to pay the rent. We are just, all, all of us just struggling to make it. We're barely making it and if we go much more higher than what we are going right now, it's gonna be even more difficult for people and we're gonna have more homeless people. Right now, in the shelter system, I've been dealing with 60,000 homeless people and it's gonna get a lot worse. And I don't, as a worker, I'm tired and as a citizen, I'm tired of seeing it.
Thank you for your testimony. Lauren Nye?
Hello. Hi. I come up here from 920 Riverside Drive. I'm also representing Rena. I'm an 1199 SEIU member. And I'm also looking or going into Brooks MPA program to focus on housing as homelessness and community development are passions of mine. I came up here specifically because I was recently served my first MCI. I'll be getting a $46 per room increase and I have five rooms, so that'll be $230. I'm already paying more than 50% of my nonprofit salary on rent and it's hard. What's possibly more disturbing is that me, along with all the other tenants, don't believe that the owner did the work that they did. So now we all have to meet on a regular basis and try and disprove that they did this work. It's not fair to legally go about ending the rent freezes while the owners continue to take illegal actions and harass tenants in unfair ways so that they make large profit lines. What I'm asking is that you please think of me and everyone else in here as you guys make your decision. The long-term impact of your rent increase is grave. Once you guys put this in motion, it's really hard to go back. As I could already tell, you're not going to roll back. It's a question of whether you're freezing it or increasing it. I really ask you to think of us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Vajra Kilgore, Ariel Miranda, and Veronica Glasgow. Yeah, if there's anyone here who wants to speak and hasn't registered, you need to register in order to speak. So please go to the registration desk at the back of the auditorium if you want to speak.
Good evening. My name is Vajra Kilgore. I live on West 122nd Street between Broadway and Amsterdam. And I'm active with Met Council and have been for some years. I'm here not so much for myself personally because, as luck would have it, I have SCRI. I'm here because my neighborhood has been trashed. I used to live, rent stabilization was about stable neighborhoods. I used to live in a stable neighborhood. It was like a little village. Now, as soon as a rent stabilized tenant moves out, their kids can't move in, other people, other solid working people, that was a solid working class, deeply integrated neighborhood. The landlord immediately is in with, within days has gutted the apartment, completely renovated it, taken it out of rent stabilization, and now it gets rented to three or four students. Who will be here briefly, who have no connection to the community, who don't care, who don't have to be anywhere in particular in the morning and can stay up as late as they want. And it's, that is also my home. My community is also my home. And the, and the social fabric of my community has just been torn. That's one thing. Another thing I would like to ask you all, how many of you have read Evicted? Any of you? Have you? All right? Well, please read it. Because you're looking at our future. If we can't maintain rent stabilization, you are looking at our future. Where does the, I don't know why, what possessed the mayor not to ask you to freeze or roll back? Maybe he's not getting enough donations from real estate interests. Wrote donations from real estate interests come from our rent money that they say they don't get enough of. They have enough to purchase politicians in upstate New York and even here in this city, but they say they don't have enough. And I just want to close with this one thing. Conceptually, why is it inconceivable that the incomes of landlords, whose incomes are astronomical compared to ours, cannot be, you know, you can't take a cent away from them, but you can take a deep cut into us, into our incomes? A deep cut into our incomes, but they get more? Another transfer from the poor to the rich, from the poor to the rich, from the poor to the rich? That's how it goes. That's why we used to call this the Rent Gouging Board. During the Bloomberg and Giuliani days, it was the Rent Gouging Board. And we have yet to recover. That's why we have the record homelessness. That's why I don't have a neighborhood anymore. And this is on you. Ava's right. If you have a conscience, vote so you can live with it. You're gonna live for the consequences of what you decide. And even what looks to you like a little rent increase, those consequences are going to be dire for thousands and thousands and thousands of people to the benefit of a handful of rich people who do not need any more money.
Ariel Miranda?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ariel Miranda.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ariel Miranda and I'm an Inwood native. I've lived there my entire life. I'm 23 years old and I actually want to stop by and speak to all of you because I've heard of the concerns of the, you know, the possibility of stopping the current rent freeze that's been going on for about two years now. My story starts when I was seven years old. My entire family was evicted from our own home. We were evicted because my mother actually had a mental illness and could not work. Now, people are- mother actually had a mental illness and could not work. Now, people are surprised when they hear that I went to Fairfield University, one of the top 15 schools in the country, that has the best business programs that get people into Goldman Sachs and all the other big corporations. But the thing was about me, I decided I didn't want to work and do that sort of career. I chose to work in the public sector. I chose to work, doing work in my own community, helping people in my community. I specifically connect tenants with legal services, Homebase, and a number of other measures to protect tenants. I see every day what happens in my community. And I'm so upset because I know that you guys have the power to control what's going to hap- You're going to control whether my family is evicted. Because we're still living together, me and my father. That's the only option I have. I might be represented by a union because I work for the city, but I still can't afford to live on my own. And I know several students who can't either. I've had several people come in, even from my own school, who taught me when I was seven, telling me they're getting evicted. You all have the power to do something. And I'm hoping that you can continue this rent freeze for the next few years to hopefully stop the issues that are coming up with stagnant wages, not helping people stay in these communities that they deserve to stay in because they've helped build these communities. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Veronica Glasgow?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Veronica Glasgow. And I'd like to tell you my story. I've been living in the Lenox Terrace Apartments. And November will make 40 years. I've seen children grow up, take over the apartments. I see them raise their kids in there. At this point, I have a granddaughter and a great-grandchild living with me that can't live anywhere else. They cannot afford an apartment. They cannot get an apartment. The rents are so high. My granddaughter is a chef in a restaurant. She makes a good salary, but she cannot afford an apartment. Now, the Lenox Terrace, it used to be a beautiful place to live in. It's not now. We don't get repairs. We don't get things that we need. On January 11th, I had to ask them to remove the kitchen sink to stop the hole up where the mice were coming in, so that my grand, great-grandchild did not get bitten by a mouse. It took me a long time to get them to move that, but they didn't want to move it because they know it was corroded. So, but they eventually did it, patched the hole up. And I could say, thank you. I don't have any mice today. But they moved in another rusted cabinet. And when I complained, they did it while I was in the room with the baby in the bedroom. When I came out and saw the cabinet and how it was old and rusted, I complained about it. The super and the guy that's in charge of maintenance now came and they looked at it and they said, you're right. We'll get you a new cabinet in a week. I'm still waiting. This is January 11th. I can't get the cabinet replaced. They dissed somebody up to scrape it and paint it. But that's it. Right. What are they doing with the money? I am a rent stabilized tenant because I've been there so long. But all my neighbors all around me are market rate tenants now. However, they don't get service either. What are they doing with the money? I can tell you what they'd like to do. They'd like to put up five buildings, additional buildings on the property to overcrowd it. Luxury buildings. High, high, they'd like to have the area rezoned from residential to commercial so they could build as high as they like. This is what's happening now. We don't get any service, yet the rent goes up and up. My granddaughter can't get an apartment there. She can't afford it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, your time is up. Could you wind up your presentation?
The rent's too damn high. The bottom line. We need a rollback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Rama, I can't read this, is it Mama? Okay. Esteban Nemhard and Misa Dyson, or Dyson. Rama?
Good evening. My name is Rama. I'm here to speak for my mother. I am a first generation Harlem native. I was actually born in Harlem. I'm 33 years old. I'm also a high school teacher. I have tons of loans and I have no choice but to stay with my mother. I recently moved in with my mother. When I, I was home one day, she went to her doctor's appointment. I heard a knock on the door. She was behind on her rent. She didn't say anything, a few months behind. So naturally, I drained my savings to finish, which I had left to finish my master's. Because when you work with the D O E, you have a certain amount of time before you can finish, before your license expires. So that was a choice that I made to keep a roof over our heads. I managed to save some money and I'm planning to finish it coming this fall. But the issue really is that my mother is 62 years old and works two jobs just to get by. And she is not even here today because she's living from hand to mouth. And this is unacceptable. And where is the concern for human dignity? I was born in Harlem. This is my home. But it seems like we're being pushed out. And this ain't just right. And this ain't right. I've done everything society has told me to do. Go to school, get a job. But that shit don't matter, apparently.
Esteban Nemhard? He left? Okay. Thank you. Misa Dyson or Dyson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Misa Dyson. I'm a third generation Harlem native resident, born and raised. I live in a rent stabilized apartment, Lenox Terrace. I was able to take over that apartment in 2008 due to, when my mom moved out, she bought an apartment. And because of the laws, I was able to take it over. I live there now with my husband, who is a public school teacher in Harlem. And we regularly talk about the fact that if it wasn't for the fact that we had, we lived in a rent stabilized apartment, we would not be able to afford living in Harlem. I want to say that I have a master's and a PhD. 75% of my friends living in Harlem who are also Harlem residents, or moved to Harlem because of Harlem's culture and history, who are Black women, also have their master's and PhD. We are all living in economic precarity. They all work either as high school, middle school, elementary school teachers. They either work as arts workers at museums, or as artists. They are the people who are doing the work that makes New York City famous and that has made Harlem famous. And none of us can afford this. At a minimum, all of us have debt of at least $50,000 from student loan debt in pursuit of the degrees that we were told that we had to get in order to get these jobs. I have a lot of friends who have, at a minimum, student loan debt from undergrad and grad of masters of $100,000. And these are friends who also have children, not just one, but two. And I'm sorry, I'm going to have to go over this. Because New York is famous around the world for the culture. But the people who make this city cannot afford to live in this city. I have friends who have already left the city because they cannot afford to live, or they are jumping through hoops trying to like store their storage stuff in Brooklyn, but commute from New Haven or commute from Philly or Delaware. So this doesn't make any kind of sense. I want to also add that I also live in Lenox Terrace. These M C I's, I don't know what they're doing. But at the beginning of the year, we had sewage smell from the basement to the 17th floor of a sewage pipe that was broken for over a week that was supposed to be fixed by the M C I. And it was only until the residents organized and called 311 and reported it, that all of a sudden Lenox Terrace started to quickly try and fix the problem. So for over a week at the beginning of this year, we had to daily come to our homes and smell sewage. And not only smell it, but hear it falling into the elevator shaft. So you want to talk about raising rent, but we're not even being taken care of in the building. It is mixed use rent and stabilize. So I just want to be clear. It's not just city workers, union members. It is people who are supposed to have, quote unquote, supposed to have, economic stability because of their advanced degrees, but we are all living in economic precarity. I have friends who have PhDs who haven't had to live off of food stamps as well. So it's not, it's everybody in this city who is struggling except for the super wealthy. And it does not make sense to have apartments 20 years ago for a two-bedroom apartment that cost $322 to now be considered normal to be $4,500 a month in this neighborhood and this city alone. So you should not be raising the rent. There should be a freeze. And until we deal with affordability and the cost of living in this city, Metro cards right now are costing $121 for a monthly, to monthly, and that's painful. I have friends where it's considered affordable to have daycare at $2,500, but they're, $2,500 a month, and they're living off of salaries of $35,000 a month. So it's not just the rent. It's the cost of living in this city that is making it difficult for families and arts workers who add to the intellectual and cultural nature of the city. What's going to happen in 20 years when we have nothing but millionaires living here? New York is going to be a shell of itself. So please keep that in mind. There are people living in economic precarity that we are told not supposed to because we are living with huge amounts of debt. And raising the rents does not make any sense, especially when you're talking about 4%. There should be a continued rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Amy Stone, Paloma Lara, I think it is, and Vinay Chisholm. So Amy Stone?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Amy Stone. I'm a native New Yorker and I'm a rent stabilized tenant. I'm a member of Met Council on Housing and a member of the Executive Committee of the 98 Riverside Drive Tenants Association. Our building has some 176 units, many of them rent stabilized, the homes of elderly tenants. Our management company is Rose Management. I've lived at 98 Riverside Drive since 1992. That's 25 years. During that time, my rent has doubled, with increases from R G B mandated increases and unending rent hikes from M C I's, which remain embedded in the lease forever, long after the M C I expenses have been recouped by the landlord. Landlords with rent stabilized tenants are not limited to, no, not limited to R G B increases. They've mastered the art of increasing rents with M C I's, I A I's, preferential leases, and vacancy bonuses. I was going to share with you the landlord's song from Les Mis. My husband advised me not to. R G B's own data on your website reflect this data. The R G B 2017 Income and Expense Study documented that landlords' net operating income increased 10.8% in 2015. That's an increase in income for the 11th consecutive year. I ask all the public members of the R G B to do the right thing and vote for either a freeze or a rollback. Chair Kathleen Roberts, Hillary Botin, Cecilia Josa, David Reese, and I especially urge Helen Schaub. As an officer of 1199, representing some of the poorest paid workers in our city, doing lifesaving work as United Healthcare Workers, do not forget your members and their families. Do not forget all of us, many of who are just a paycheck away from losing our apartments. The tiniest increase is devastating for many of us. And the landlords continue to profit even with a rollback. It's in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Paloma Lara?
Hi, my name is Paloma Lara and I grew up in the Lower East Side, in a one-bedroom apartment with four sisters and two parents. I obviously could no longer afford to live in the Lower East Side because the rent was so high. And I moved to Washington Heights and I can barely afford it now. I love the neighborhood with all my heart and I conjugated it into a person because I have so much love for it. And I would lose so much of myself if I lost a place where I have found myself, that I love, that we have so many parks, that I have found a community. And I guess I'm taking this opportunity to just say to, please not raise the rent anymore, to give us an opportunity to really live in places where we belong, where we find our community, and not to have to move year after year to pay brokers an outrageous fee in order to find an apartment that isn't fitted for who we are. My sister lived with her two daughters, again, in a one-bedroom apartment with my parents for 10 years because she couldn't find a place that she can afford. And now she finally found a place and is a single mother of two kids and is paying $1,700 for an apartment and is basically using all of her money to be able to live in a place and give her daughters a room where they can actually express themselves and have some privacy. And like, that's all that we ask, for us to be able to live in a comfortable space where we don't have to think every day about where we're going to pay, if we're going to pay our car mortgage, if we're going to feed our kids, or if we're going to pay the rent. Like, we just want some stability in our lives in order to really give our family what they need. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Vinay Chisholm?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Vinay Chisholm. Excuse my throat. I have a little allergy trouble. Okay, I want to thank Tenants and Neighbors for inviting me. I'm a member of Tenants and Neighbors. They informed me about another hearing, which we appreciate every year, what y'all do, in giving us this opportunity to render our feelings about increasing our rent. I'm a president of the tenant association in my building. Just like some of the residents here have stated today, some of the other tenants do not want to come forward and state their sorrows. They're scared. They really are scared of the landlords. Because they're afraid of getting evicted. I have helped some tenants that had notice put on their door, saying you got 60 days to get out. And they believed it. I'm like, no, they can't do that to you. You understand me? I learned a lot being involved with these organizations. Community Voice is her. Tenants and Neighbors. I did outreach with Pitcher, Pitcher of the Homeless. I want y'all to really understand what these people, as well as me, out here today, to actually please take- actually please take in consideration what we're trying to say to you. Please don't increase. What we need to do is come up with something for the slumlords. Take a survey. See what they done in regards to repair and what you feel they may be able to get an increase. You understand me? Let them show you what they did for some of us first, before y'all just give them an increase. I think that's fair. Get a survey, get a report, let the tenants tell you, "Oh yeah, I got my toilet fixed, I got this fixed." Let us tell you, let them tell you something. Please, just don't increase on behalf of the landlord, 'cause they wouldn't have all this property if they didn't have no money. Okay? So please, take that in consideration. I thank y'all very much for listening to all of us. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. The next speakers are Creolita, if I'm getting that right, Reyes, who needs a Spanish interpreter, Shawan Virgil, and Elaine Williams.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Ay, ay, ay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Buenas tardes.
After I hear all this story, I just wanna write everything from everybody. Very interesting.
Hablar en español o en inglés?
Yes, un poco de inglés, pero...
Sigue en inglés entonces.
Déjame tratar, quédate ahí si te necesito.
Stay here, stay here in case I need you.
Okay. I would like to speak in behalf of my daughter, my neighborhood. I live in Washington Heights, between Inwood and Washington Heights. And I've lived in my building for more than 30 years. We have a new landlord about four years ago. He decided to change the boiler, change the door to the buildings, change the elevators, which we don't need, it was major change. During the winter, we don't have heat, and they sent a letter to increase the rent. Increase the rent, for me, is increase the amount of people going to the street, the amount the people get sick, depressed, sunned, because they don't have a place to live. When I decided to become an American citizen, I went to the library and I read a book, which they say all American citizens have the right to have an apartment. I don't know if the book is still alive, because it's so many years. And I don't know if this is still in the life to the people. If we have a right to have an apartment, how are we gonna afford the apartment with the high rent? And a lot of people, my daughter paid like $300, more than $1,000, excuse me, more than $1,000 for rent. She lived on the sixth floor. When the raining outside, raining inside. And you gotta decide to increase the rent. See, she can move in from that apartment. It's shame that landlords send their people to fix in the roof. When they fixing today, tomorrow it's raining, the water running inside my daughter apartment. She had to have copper bucket, plastic bucket, and all over the apartment to hold the water. And I don't think it's fair. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
Would you understand English?
If there's anyone else who wants to speak and you haven't signed up, please be sure to sign up at the registration desk in the back. You need to sign up in order to speak. Thank you. Shawan Virgil? Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you be sure to speak into the microphone, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, excuse me, I'm very nervous.
No problem.
All right. I was gonna come here, basically, and just let you know how I have, I was born here. I was raised between Birmingham and New York, but I was born here. In my adult life, I have worked two jobs since, what, 19, to try and afford an apartment that I could have for me, myself, and I. When I went to Delano Village, Savoy Park, where I live right now, I've been there for 17 years. I went there because of the security. Security was fabulous when I went there. Have no issues. The other places that I lived, there were some questionable incidences that happened that I was happy where I lived. I'm not happy anymore. I feel like I've worked all my life, two jobs. I am a jack-of-all-trades, but how come I cannot live the way that I think I should be living? I am almost 50 years old and I am still living paycheck to paycheck. And excuse my French, if it wasn't for that paycheck, I would not have a pot to piss in. And I am being very straight and very honest. Sometimes I put food in my refrigerator, sometimes I go without. And I just found out today, even though I am not a mom, I might become a mom because my 35-year-old niece has cancer. She has five kids. She left New York because she could not live here. She went to Atlanta. Now, we have to bring this woman back to New York to get care for her and take care of her five kids that have to be split up between my sister and I, because we cannot afford, afford to take care of all of these children. She lives on the East Side paying $1,900 rent. I don't know what I'm gonna do if you guys raise the rent. I do not want to leave my home. Please, do not make me leave my home. That's all I'm gonna say. Do not make me leave my home. I will be a parent like all these other people in here and please don't let me leave my home. I'm very nervous, I'm very upset. Please, do not make me leave my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Williams? Good evening, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. I'm back here again this year.
Welcome back.
I'm a born, bred, and raised New Yorker in Harlem. I've lived at the Lenox Terrace for 54 years. And the Lenox Terrace, as well as other rent-stabilized buildings that people have moved in, is a place where long-term tenants moved in to raise their family. During that time, 1968, most of the city workers, you had different people from all walks of life, city, state, federal, political, professional people that had moved into the terrace. But they came from Harlem. They came from uptown Harlem. They came from what we call Sugar Hill. They came from the Valley. And they came and they moved into a development that was promised to be someplace where you could raise your family, be secure, and be a part of the community. And that's what we did. The quality of life that exists at the Lenox Terrace, as well as other buildings, has come from the tenants that reside there. They bought it there. It is the development, when you get in the elevator in the morning, you say, "Good morning" or "Good afternoon." Okay? And this is taught to the children. I would dare say that if you took a statistics of the children that was raised in the terrace and other buildings like that, you will find that 90% of the kids have higher education and better. And that is because of what was brought by the families to this community and to this development. Now you have short-term tenants. That's who the owners want, because then they can take advantage of the 20% bonus vacancy. Every time that apartment is vacant, boom, they don't have to do anything, the owners get 20%. A one-bedroom apartment, six years ago, that was renting from $900 because of a long-term tenant having been there 30 years, is now $2,200. And a two-bedroom is $3,500 and better. Who can afford that? My son moved with me over five years ago because of the increases in the rent and because I'm on a fixed income. I'm a senior, 82 years of age, with a pension and Social Security, but that's not sufficient to keep up with the increases that are given to owners. They don't need any more money. They get it every time they do that 20% bonus, that the rent goes up. In three years, an apartment would have had 60% increase on the original rent. So we're not here begging, we're here to say, be truthful and be honest and be fair to the tenants that live in rent-stabilized housing and has provided this community with the wherewithal that people want to come and move to Harlem. That is because of the tenants that have been here for years that have provided the quality of life. They didn't know about Lenox Terrace until 9/11. They didn't know about Clayton Houses or any of these buildings, because 9/11 pushed them uptown. And when they came uptown, they said, "Oh, this is Harlem? This isn't as big..." What about all the crime and everything that's going on? You know, you can't walk in the street. That was propaganda by the real estate people that didn't want people moving into Harlem. We open our doors in Harlem to everyone. Okay? Color, creed, it doesn't matter. But we want everyone to be treated fairly. We don't want to be pushed out because owners are greedy, that they are now renting to students or people doing residency, that they know in two years they're gonna be gone and boom, the rent goes up again. So I'm just saying, be fair. Be fair to the people that have built Harlem and have lived there and given their all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Thomasine Holloway and Jules Hollander. Good evening.
My name is Thomasine Holloway and I'm a longtime resident of the Lenox Terrace Development. I'm a retired New York City teacher, obviously on a fixed income. My pension increase is one-half of 1%. One-half of 1% is the maximum increase on my pension. For those of you who don't know, and I'm sure you all do, there has been no Social Security increase for two years. But Medicare did go up, even though Social Security didn't go up. So we are constantly faced with these terrible expenses. Prescriptions, we have, I'm in the UFT, and we have very good prescription plans, but sometimes the best drugs cost the most money. And you simply have to pay the co-pay. There's no getting around it. If you want good quality care, you really do have to pay. I just wanna say one thing about Lenox Terrace. There was a time when the upkeep was good. January 6th, 2016, the gas in my building was turned off because Con Edison found a problem in the basement, part of it caused by the landlord. The gas was not turned on again for all 200-plus apartments until May. Now, automatically, housing should have stepped in. If the entire building was affected because of something crazy the landlord did to save a dime, we should not have had to file individual housing claims. 200 people, they didn't all do something funny to Con Ed. I simply wanna say, we don't deserve an increase, should not have an increase. The landlords that I deal with are incompetent. Thank you.
Thank you. Jules Hollander?
My name is Jules Hollander. I am a music teacher in Harlem and I recently moved into Lenox Terrace three years ago. I am a white gentrifier. I have gentrified into Brooklyn, into Bushwick, Bed-Stuy, now Harlem. Let me tell you, I'm seeing the same thing happening all over this city, and I know that you must know the same too. Each and every time, the local population gets displaced, and who comes in? The majority of those people are white people with money. Okay? We can't talk about what's going on without talking about systemic racism. When I moved into Lenox Terrace, I moved in with my wife, Misa Dayson. We've had numerous problems in our apartment, and I've also witnessed numerous problems in other apartments, specifically those apartments that have been rent-stabilized. Now, I know that we don't get the same kind of treatment that tenants who come in who are in non-rent-stabilized apartments. Now, what is that about? We need to talk about what is going on here, right? We need to talk about economic equity. What is going on here? It's a fight against the local population to bring in money, right? This is not okay. And again, if we don't talk about systemic racism, we're never going to get to the heart of the issue here. So I'm employing you, especially in this day and age when we got number 45 as our POTUS, be on the right side of history. Fight for economic equity. Fight for racial equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollander. That's our last scheduled speaker. If there's anyone else who wants to speak, you still have 10 minutes to sign up. Otherwise, the hearing will conclude at 8:00 PM as scheduled.
I can speak again. Tell us something about what we said.
I think we have someone signing up.
Yep.
Can we hear some comments from y'all? Right? You have to say, what do you have to offer?
You can just step up and give us your name. We'll get the sheet in just a minute.
Nova Lucero.
Lucero, is that your last name?
Lucero.
Lucero, okay. Thank you.
Be sure you speak into the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I start? Oh, I thought, I had to wait to be like, okay, okay. My, my, my entourage is here. Um, my name is Nova Lucero, and I'm a community organizer with the Met Council on Housing. I work with rent-stabilized tenants in northern Manhattan to organize tenant associations to fight back against their bad landlords and against the mayor's terrible MIH and rezoning plan. My tenants, a lot of them are not here because they have to work two to three jobs with overnight shifts and no overtime to be able to pay their rents. And that's basically to live paycheck to paycheck. My tenants are not here because they are too scared of retaliation from their bad landlords who are already increasing rents in a number of ways outside of this really bad decision of the Rent Guidelines Board to increase their rents. My tenants are not here because they are worried about sticking out their necks, even by testifying, because they are afraid that this will land them on some blacklist with their landlord, and they will retaliate in the way of, of making sure that they get no repairs done in a, in a process that's already been difficult for them to get repairs. My tenants are not here because they cannot afford to pay for anything besides the transportation to go to and from work, food and barely that, basic supplies to take care of themselves and their kids, and rent. And I know that many more would be here if they did not end up on the streets or in shelters due to eviction falling, from falling behind on rent. And it's because of rent increases like this that you guys have voted for that are putting these people in this place. There is a direct correlation between the rent increases decided by the Rent Guidelines Board and those who end up homeless in shelters and who are displaced from New York City. Tenants deserve a rent rollback, and although you guys have decided to be scared and feel the landlord pressure to increase the rents, I would like to encourage you to give us a rent rollback, because that's what tenants deserve. And to be quite honest, it's infuriating to even have to testify to you guys, because you guys should really be listening to tenants, and tenants should be up there, and they should be telling you what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie McLeaves.
Hi, I'm Katie McLeaves. I'm a tenant organizer with Tenants and Neighbors, and I'm here, like everyone else, asking for a rent rollback. I have only lived in New York for 10 months now, and already I can clearly see that tenants cannot afford, do not deserve, a rent increase. They deserve and they need a rent rollback. We can stand here and talk about MCIs and IAIs and the vacancy decontrol bonus until we're blue in the face. I know you guys know, that's how landlords make their money. We can talk about the data. I know you guys know the data. Why we're here today and why I'm here speaking on behalf of the rent-stabilized tenants that I work with is to humanize the issue. These are real people, these are their homes, and their homes are at stake. My tenants are terrified of losing their homes because of the rent increases that are proposed. I ask for a rent freeze and want to clarify that the tenants I work with and all tenants in New York deserve a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLeaves. This hearing is to hear from you, it's not to hear from us.
We want to hear.
Y'all gotta be public people that do things because we want to tell us how you feel. That doesn't make sense. If we can tell you how we feel, y'all can't tell us how, that doesn't make sense. We gotta be public people. Y'all can't tell us how you feel. Doesn't make sense.
How are you gonna respond? That now you already have to do a 1% increase, which is already too much. So, how are you gonna take it back? You're gonna roll back in order for us, living in New York City and the city where we grew up, where we love our neighbors and with our communities that's built back here.
Where the what?
To build our homes, to our landlords, and to feed our families.
This shit doesn't make sense.
Give us your opinion. Give us your honest opinion.
You people, you people only care about, don't care nothing about.
Do you remember my apartment?
Well, I don't know.
What are you saying to what you heard today?
Okay, I just want to end the hearing by reminding you that there are going to be three more public hearings to comment on the proposed guidelines, and they will be held at the following dates, times, and locations. On Monday, June 12th, at the Bronx Museum of the Arts in the Lower Gallery from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. On Wednesday, June 14th, at the Alexander Hamilton Custom House at One Bowling Green, and that's from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And on Monday, June 19th, 2017, at St. Francis College at Founder's Hall, which is at 180 Remsen Street in Brooklyn, New York, and that's from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The final vote will take place on June 27th, starting at 7:00 PM. It will be held at Baruch College, Mason Hall, 17 Lexington Avenue, corner of 23rd Street in Manhattan. At this point, is there any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I would like to.
Answer our questions. You want to play why you chose the rate you chose?
Do you have, is there something you want to say, Harvey?
Yeah, I, I was concerned about making sure that if there are rules that are governing some of our decisions, it'd be great to know what those rules are. And so, if there are concerns around how the process is going and what we're doing, I'd like to figure out when we're gonna have those conversations, like we raised at the last hearing, there's a question about whether someone can testify on someone else's behalf. I don't know of any rule that says that can or cannot happen. If we're gonna set rules, it'd be great to know what those are, and so we can all have a collaborative process, then put those rules down so everyone can be aware of what the rules are. So, I don't know if you want to do that today or another day.
Well, I, I don't think that this is exactly the right time to do that, but what I would welcome from you, if you have a proposal with respect to that particular issue, I think it'd be helpful to circulate it.
So, you, no, I'm happy to circulate something, but I think people can testify, if their mother can't come, they can testify. If someone else can't come and they can testify, I think people should, not every, not everyone can get here because of life circumstances, what we've heard. So, I think if someone's coming here to testify on their behalf or someone else's behalf--
There's no problem, they can come and testify. The, the, the rule that you're referring to is that people can't come and just simply read somebody else's testimony.
Right, so, so if someone writes something, can they present what someone else wrote even if they're not here? I think we should allow that anyone to testify for anything and any reason. I don't think there's a reason to limit someone's ability to come, either written or oral, and someone present that testimony.
Part of the public record?
Yeah. We all have families and friends.
Well, we'll have to talk about it. We're, we're gonna have to discuss it, I think, at a future time. We need to get some further guidance about, I'm hearing that there are places where that rule was published, and honestly, I need to look further into it.
Okay, so, I think going forward, I, because I don't want to create conflict in the future, if there's someone who's coming, I think should we let them testify until we have a clear sense of what we're gonna limit?
I think this is something the board should have an opportunity to discuss.
Great, so maybe at our next meeting, we can do that.
All right.
Ho, ho! High rent and guts, go hey, hey!
It's, it's 8:00 PM. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
High rent and guts, go hey, hey!
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The meeting is adjourned.